Hello Halifax, I'm Selectman Jonathan Seelig. I'm joined now here with our Town Administrator Cody Hadad. And we are actually hosting a Town Meeting Warrant Preview. Cody had the great idea, he's done it in previous communities, of going over the warrant before our annual town meeting to give you guys a little bit of preview of what to expect, so that you're not trying to educate yourself while the meeting's going on. Hopefully this sheds some light into what all the different articles are. You'll notice it's a smaller warrant than usual this year. We have about 26 articles. And this is basically going to be a brief synopsis of what each of those articles are, what they mean, and hopefully we'll provide you with some understanding. Our town meeting this year is Monday, May 8th. It is at 6:30 over at Halifax Elementary School. The doors will open at 5:45. And I urge you all to try to get there as soon as possible, as close to 5:45 as you can, because as you know, in previous years, we sometimes struggled to get a quorum. We need 100 people before we can start our meeting, so please, I think it's going to be a quick evening. Please try to get there as early as possible. 5:45, the doors will open, and I hope, knock on wood, we can bang this out in one night, believe it or not. So that would be great. Cody, anything I forgot or didn't mention to get this thing going?
Nope, that was great. Excited to be here. This is my first town meeting in Halifax. This is your Town Administrator. Happy to be here.
We're happy to have you.
Excited to be attending my first town meeting. And like you said, I think we'll get through the warrant rather quickly and get people out of here and get the business of the town done.
Excellent, excellent. Looking forward to it. Yeah, my first day on the job last year was at a town meeting, so at least now I'll have a little bit of time to prepare. So, alright, cool. So we're gonna jump into the warrant here, and I will start with Article 1. And Article 1 is simply a housekeeping article. It is to hear and act on the reports of the Town Officers Committee. Essentially, it's basically to approve what is in the town warrant here. So more of a housekeeping measure, nothing really more than that. So that is Article number 1. Article number 2 is a Wage and Personnel article. The Wage and Personnel Bylaw Committee did get together, and we looked at a couple different positions, and they were amended to change the compensation range for a couple of positions, namely the Call Firefighter EMT from $24.02 to $26. The Geriatric Nurse from $19.45 to $26. And the Assistant Outreach Worker from $16.11 to $18. And essentially, we were doing that because we were finding that unfortunately, our price and our salaries weren't really competitive compared to the general area here, and we're having a very, very hard time filling those positions. So that's what Article 2 is. There's also one more as well, and as part of that article, we would amend the classification of Police Lieutenant Deputy Chief from a Grade 14 to an unclassified. And just so you know, the Finance Committee recommends on those. So those are the first two articles. Mr. Hadad, take it away.
Thank you, Jonathan. Article 3, this is another annual article. This sets the salaries and stipends of elected officials. The only change for the upcoming fiscal year is the salary of the Town Clerk. This increase comes as the Town Clerk's current compensation is based on a 32-hour work week. As the requirements of the state continue to evolve, election requirements, and really the Town Clerk's office duties have expanded greatly.
Yes, they have.
We see the need to have a 40-hour-a-week Town Clerk. So the change in compensation for the Town Clerk would be to accommodate those additional eight hours a week, which the Finance Committee did recommend, and we've discussed this at great length internally, and we find it very necessary to continue the operations in that office. The Article 4 is going to be our annual operating budget. That'll be included in your warrant. This is similar to every other year. There are a couple of increases that I will make note of. Most of the increases are just the result of having to fund increased operating expenses. The school budget, which is also included in the warrant, you will see there's been an increase there. But we are adding a part-time position of a Conservation Agent, so that is an increase in the budget of $28,000. We have other contractual increases in some of our contracts, not for personnel, but more for our expenses. We have various contracts for various expenses, from IT to facilities, that have increased... You'll see that change in the Town Clerk's salary, as I just mentioned, that is also highlighted in the operating budget. In the Police Department, there is an increase, a significant increase in that line item for two main reasons. One of them being, we are looking to fund a Police Lieutenant/Deputy Chief, which we see as a necessary to continue operations for two reasons. One being, we want a clear succession plan in town where if the Chief wins the lottery, as I like to say, we have someone who can continue to take over. Doesn't necessarily mean that person becomes our next Chief, but they can at least steer the ship as we search for our next Chief. And the other reason being, many of you have heard the increased police accountability, the Post Commission in Massachusetts. There's a lot of administrative requirements, and we really need someone to be able to assist in those tasks that can assist the Chief. And when that position is not doing the administrative task, they would be on the road acting as a supervisor. So that is a great addition. And then we also have a retirement of one of our longtime police sergeants, who will be retiring in this fiscal year, and there is a buyout of sick and vacation time. So that's really the main two reasons for the substantial increase in the police wage budget.
Okay.
And other than that, it's really status quo in our operating budget. We asked all departments this year to level service their departments, which means there were some increases, but only ones that needed to come as a result of providing the same services that they provided to the community in the past. One other thing I will make note of is there are not any wage increases in the budget as we are currently bargaining our contracts. We will get to an article later on where we are going to account for some of that funding, and that would be to settle those contracts, that funding in the future, and also any wage and personnel increases would come out of that funding in that article, but would also come back to town meeting for the bylaw amendment.
Sure.
So just wanted to touch base on that, so our town meeting and our residents know that that is coming in the future, but is not included in this operating budget.
Sure. And not to cut you slack, but you did get here in January, and it took some time to get all our feet under us and ready to roll, so as you say, that money will be available to folks for raises and such.
Absolutely. Very good point. And that is about it for the operating budget. Article 5, this is another housekeeping annual article. This sets the maximum amount to be spent out of our revolving funds. There's various revolving funds here. Basically, that just means the money that comes into the account gets spent out of the same account, and this goes unchanged from last year's amounts. And Article 6, another annual article here. This is an appropriation to our reserve fund of $75,000, and $50,000 for the Water Department Reserve Fund. The reserve fund is utilized in emergencies throughout the year, unexpected expenses. It's an account that the Finance Committee ultimately controls, and they would approve any expenditures out of the reserve fund. And like I said, the same amount as has been in the past few years.
Excellent.
Article 7, Jonathan?
Alright, Article 7. That is the Water Treatment Plant Upgrades Article. It has been brought to our attention that we need to upgrade our water plants by the EPA, and these are improvements that have been needed to be done a long time coming. So this is basically just for you guys to give the okay for the Water Department to take care of these upgrades that are sorely needed at this point. As of right now, Cody, it doesn't have a number in it. That is because the bids, I believe, we were just receiving, or they're coming in now?
Yes, we did just receive the bids, so we will have a solid number for town meeting. We wanted to provide an accurate number that would allow us to move forward with the project without any more delays. So we went out to bid as close as we could. We've received those bids, and we will have a figure to put in at town meeting.
Okay, excellent.
One other thing to note on that is, this would be funded out of the Water Department.
Correct.
So the general taxpayer of Halifax would not fund these upgrades. These upgrades, the Water Department is self-sustaining, so the revenue that they bring in as a result of the service they offer, which is water, is what covers their costs. So this would be covered out of the revenue coming in from that. The general tax levy that comes into the town would not fund these upgrades.
Right.
So only if you're utilizing the service, would you really be paying for this upgrade?
I feel like that's everybody's question all the time, is is this gonna affect my tax rate?
Exactly. No, it will not, and we actually, based on our analysis, we do not believe we will have to raise rates, water rates either.
Excellent.
We can absorb this cost within the existing rate structure.
Excellent. Good news, good news all around. Alright, moving on to Article 8. This one is for $260,000 for anticipated provisions, and again, this is the wage and personnel and collective bargaining. So as Cody said, we haven't got our contracts finished yet before town meeting, and I know in some communities, a lot of times, that's status quo. It's a little bit unusual here, but it has been done in communities in the area. So what we're essentially doing is we're putting this money aside to kind of take into account that those contracts and those wage and personnel increases are going to be coming. So we are setting that money aside to make sure that we have enough to cover when those contracts come to call and when our wage and personnel stuff has been sought through.
Yeah, I will note, it is, that's perfect. I will note that any of that $260,000 that goes unspent would just go back into the general fund and result in free cash at the end of the year. So if we were to come in under that amount, that's what the remaining money would go back into the general fund.
Great.
For further utilization.
Awesome. Alright, number 9, you are up.
Article 9, this is a new article to the Town of Halifax.
Yes, it is.
You know, typically, the town has had a capital items, and every capital item has been its own article that would be voted upon. In order to create more efficiency and provide a little bit more of a clear option, we're creating what's called the Capital Plan. This is something that you'll see on the annual warrant going forward now. And this is just a list of all the capital items that our Finance Committee has recommended for approval. So capital requests coming from our department heads, they're vetted by myself, our town accountant. We have a Capital Planning Committee, they also vet these requests, and then the Finance Committee. So this is a list of all the items. I'll go through them quickly. This will be handled very similar at town meeting to how the operating budget is handled, where they will go through each item. If there's a hole on a specific item, we would hold and come back to that item to provide further information, but the article itself would be voted on as one, so all the items would be voted as one article.
And I like this setup, Cody, because it allows people, if they have any questions, to raise the question, but by doing this, we've kind of consolidated things a little bit. So instead of a town warrant with 85 articles, you know, we have a town warrant with 26 articles, to your point, a much more efficient use of time.
Yes.
But also gives the people a chance to, if they have any questions, you know, make a question. So I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, great. So for capital items this year, in our Highway Department, a $300,000 request for road maintenance. This is an annual article. And then also $150,080 for a wheeled excavator. This could also be used in the cemetery. There's really, the Finance Committee has done their due diligence, as well as our staff, and this is an item that can be very versatile and used throughout town. And municipal maintenance, there's a request for $500,000 for ADA compliance projects. At town meeting, our Municipal Maintenance Director has a list of potential projects. We are leaving it to just ADA, because there's a lot of ADA compliance projects that we need to undertake within the town in the next several years. This is, you'll likely see an article like this again, but this is a good start for a Town Hall and some of the other buildings within town to bring them up to ADA compliance. There's a request for a Town Hall portico repair, that's for $50,000, and library window replacement for $45,000. In the Fire Department, there's a request for a new fire command vehicle for $80,000. I will note, this is, we're doing a little bit of shifting within the Fire Department. So we are in need of a new brush truck in the Fire Department, and that is typically a Ford F-350. The cost to replace that truck would be around $120,000 or $130,000. Our Fire Chief has, the Chief's vehicle is an F-350, newly acquired in the past couple of years. And we found an efficiency where we could get a new command vehicle at $80,000. Don't necessarily need that large truck. And we would take the existing Chief's vehicle, transfer it over to the brush truck, and outfit it with all the things on the brush truck, to the $280,000 rather than $120,000.
Using what we have.
Exactly. So these are the efficiencies that we're always looking for in areas to, you know, the least amount of a burden to the taxpayer that we can.
Love it.
And also within the Fire Department, there's a request for some motorola Minotaur pagers. Within the Police Department, there's two Police Cruiser requests. This is pretty much an annual article for $110,000. There's a request for bulletproof vests for $5,000, and portable radios for $15,789.
And just, Cody, on a clarification on the cruisers, this is the kind of buyback program we've been doing, the upkeep, where every three years or so, we swap out two crews, our oldest two, with the two new ones. So we're not adding to our fleet, we're just swapping out and selling back the other ones.
Yep, this is part of the annual replacement cycle.
Yep.
So we're continuing with that process.
Great.
And the last item on the Capital Plan is a GAZB study, so it's an accounting study that the town is required to do every few years, and that's the sum of $7,300. This was recommended by the Finance Committee, and you know, we hope to move this along and create some efficiencies during town meeting, and we're very excited for this.
I'm excited for our first Capital Plan.
Yes.
I think it's gonna be great. I think that people are gonna like it.
Yes.
And again, it shortens the night for us a little bit, but still lets you folks have any concerns, you're allowed to raise them, so I think it's a win-win.
Yeah, very good. Article 10 now is an appropriation of $18,660 to the Assessors Recertification Account. This is an annual article that we must comply with. And Article 11?
Article 11.
All yours.
That's mine. Alright, so I like to call this one the Troy Garen Article. I know this has been one that our former Selectman has championed over the years. It's for $3,500 to be spent for the South Coastal County Legal Services Incorporated. It's a great program. It provides legal services for elders, low-income families, children. I just think it's near and dear to my heart, because we've been doing it for a while, and I think it's a great cause. So that is Article 11. Article 12, kind of in the same vein, again, $3,500 to the South Shore Resource and Advocacy Center. That's for domestic violence intervention and prevention. Make those services available to our residents. So again, a great program, and I'm glad we're able to take part of that. So that's Article 12. Going down to Article 13, this one is the Resource Officer for the Middle School. The town would be on the hook for $38,000. That is 2/3 of the salary for the Resource Officer at the Silver Lake Middle School. How it works is Kingston provides the funding for the Resource Officer at the high school, 100% of that. Us and Plimpton take over the money for the middle school officer. So we pay 2/3 of that salary, and Plimpton pays 1/3 of that salary. So that's Article 13. Again, $38,000 for a Resource Officer for the middle school.
And that breakup of Halifax paying 2/3 and Plimpton paying 1/3 based off of enrollment, right?
Correct.
So Halifax has more enrollment than Plimpton, so that's why we're paying more of the share.
Yep, yep, yeah, and it's been like that. I know this has been going on for the last three years or so, so nothing new, but again, I think it's a good article. So jumping now to Article 14. And this one, I think, will have an amendment. So originally, it was for $202,458.79. They were looking to replace two rooftop units at the Silver Lake High School. We have since learned, since the warrant has been printed, that they're only now going to be looking for one unit. So there will be an amended amount. When you go to town meeting, it won't be the, hopefully it's half, I don't know, but we'll get that final number. And again, that's to replace some of the AC units up at the high school, and Finance Committee will be making the recommendation at town meeting for that article. Jumping down to Article 15, this is another good one. This is $150 for the Trustees for County Cooperative Extension Services. This basically allows any child here in Halifax that's interested in joining programs like 4H and other agricultural programs, access to those programs. So for $150, I think that's a great deal, and obviously the Finance Committee recommends that one. And that is Article 15. And without further ado, Mr. Hadad, Article 16.
Very good. Article 16, this is actually a capital item, and the reason this is not included in the Capital Plan is this item was not recommended by the Finance Committee. So as I had said, the Finance Committee vets these requests, evaluates them, and they, after hearing from the department head, which is the Highway Surveyor, they did not recommend this article, which is $69,500 to replace an existing wood chipper in town. So this is being proposed by the Highway Surveyor, and as I said, is not recommended by the Finance Committee, which is why it's a separate article.
And going forward, Cody, since we're doing the Capital Plan, this will be how that goes, this will be the procedure if an article in the Capital Plan or an item is not recommended, this will how it will be handled going forward? Is that how we're doing it?
Yeah, I would think so. The department heads still have a right to put it on the warrant, so we advise the department head, if something like this happens, that the Finance Committee will not be recommending it, it will not be included in the Capital Plan, so they can consider withdrawing, or if they would still like to put it forward, then we would put it as a separate article with the information that it was not recommended by the Finance Committee.
Gotcha.
So that is Article 16.
Okay.
Article 17, this is an appropriation to the town's Stabilization Fund. So we do not have an amount, because the amount will depend on if Article 16 gets approved or not. Ultimately, at the end of the year, we receive a figure from the state, which is called our Free Cash Number, but it's really surplus revenue. And it gets certified by the state in typically the fall, and then we use it to fund our capital at the next town meeting. So we have about $100,000 in surplus revenue that is not being accounted for here in capital items. That would likely be appropriate to the Stabilization Fund. If Article 16 gets approved, that number would decrease by that amount.
Gotcha.
So we'll plug the number in at town meeting.
Gotcha.
But it's very important for the town to have a strong stabilization fund. It is ultimately an emergency fund if things, the COVID happens, or the economy were to tank. It allows the town some flexibility to continue operating. Right now, we are at a little under 4% of our general fund operating revenues. We hope to increase that amount. The Finance Committee will be creating a policy in the future, and likely, our goal would be to get to 7.5% in the next few years, and then hopefully 10% in the further future, which is a good financial policy for us to have.
Sounds good.
Article 18. Article 18 and Article 19 go together to an extent. So as part of the opioid crisis, which I'm sure most of you have heard about, the Attorney General's Office sued the drug manufacturers on behalf of the Commonwealth in all of the cities and towns within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. As a result, Halifax has received an allotment of $700,000 for the opioid settlements, but the state law requires us to spend it on specific things related to the opioid crisis. We don't have items in mind yet. Most municipalities are still working toward what we're gonna spend it on, but we need to account for that money and put it aside. So Article 18 is to create a stabilization fund, special use, special purpose stabilization fund to put the money into. And that's all 18 is, is creating the fund. So it would be the Opioid Settlement Stabilization Fund. Article 19 would actually be to transfer the money into the stabilization fund. We don't have the figure yet, because we're receiving more money this month, actually, and so we will have the exact figure at town meeting, which would be transferred to the stabilization fund for further use by the town. Any appropriation from a stabilization fund also has to be approved at town meeting. So this would basically be just putting it there as a placeholder, and at a future town meeting, we would come back to appropriate that funding out of that stabilization fund.
Excellent. And then you say those two articles are linked. So for those that are new to a town meeting, we have a lottery system. It's the most fun part of the night. I like to try to guess what article is gonna be pulled out next. But other than Articles 1 through 4, Articles 5 through 26, we will randomly pull a number out, just so that there's no, I don't wanna say collusion or anything, but no sense that we're putting one article ahead of another, or something like that. So the randomness of that is kind of nice. So as you see, with these 18 and 19 are linked together, if one of those numbers is pulled, the other one will be done, you know, in conjunction.
Yes.
So that eliminates any of the confusion there.
Yes, exactly.
Which is great.
Great point.
Yeah, alright, I'm going to Article 20.
Oh, did we do 19?
You just did 19.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, you just did 19, that's okay. I'm doing Article 20, which is a, gives the Selectmen and their designee, which in this case would be the Board of Assessors, basically a pilot program here for a solar field on River Street, which is 115 River Street. So pilot stands for Payment in Lieu of Taxes. They have had another one here in town before. It's kind of, I don't wanna say standard procedure with these, but it's a popular way to handle the solar fields. So you would essentially be giving the Selectmen and the Assessors the right to negotiate a pilot for that project. And that's Article 20. Article 21, similar, close, but essentially further down the road, literally down the road. 107 River Street, so not far from there. This project had already been green-lighted for the pilot. The town had given the Selectmen and the Assessors the power to negotiate a pilot. They have negotiated that pilot. They came to an amount of $83,000 through fiscal year 2040. So essentially, what you're doing when you approve Article 21, you are approving that decision and that, I guess, agreement for that. So more kind of a housekeeping measure. You guys gave us the power to negotiate it, it's been negotiated, and negotiated, easy for me to say, and now we just need you, as the townsfolk, to kind of finish that process and approve Article 21.
Very good.
Alright, Article 22 to you.
Article 22, this would be authorization to the Board of Selectmen to enter into a lease agreement for the Hemlock Lane landfill. It's approximately 5.2 acres for the purpose of solar.
I'm excited.
So in order...
I'm excited for that one.
Yes, very exciting. This is only a benefit to the town as far as revenue goes. So we would look to lease the land for the purpose of solar only, and that's stated in the article. And ultimately, we would charge a fee, a leasing fee, an annual fee, to a solar company that they would pay to us just to place their solar on the land. And then there also may be an opportunity for us to purchase that power for the town's municipal buildings at a cheaper rate than we would typically buy on the market. So not only will we receive a lease payment, but there may be an opportunity for us to also get our electricity at a lower cost, which would be phenomenal. The reason this is before town meeting is we would look for authorization to go up to 30 years, and up to a 30-year lease. It may not be the full 30, it may be 20, 25, really depends on the vendor, but any lease over five years needs town meeting authorization. So that's why we are here with Article 22.
And as somebody that signs our electric bills, I am excited, excited at the possibility.
Yeah, this will be great. This is a very good article. Article 23, this is a citizens petition proposed by John Graveney and nine others. This would be to change the Board of Selectmen from three members to five members. Article 24 is another citizens petition proposed by John Graveney and nine others, and this would be to change the Town Clerk, Treasure Collector, and Highway Surveyor from elected to appointed. So they're currently elected positions. If this were to pass a town meeting, it would also, both these articles would have to go to the ballot for the whole town to vote on, and then if they pass there, then they would ultimately take effect.
Excellent.
Article 25, 26?
Alright, alright, bringing this home here. Article 25 is basically a strong chief article for our Police Chief. So essentially, right now in Halifax, our Fire Chief is a strong chief, and what a strong chief is, is it gives the Chief certain powers and rights, I guess, you could look at it. So put it this way, if the Fire Chief wants to bring in someone in his department, he has hiring and firing powers in the department. As it stands now with our Police Department, our Police Chief brings those folks in and gets Selectmen approval to do hiring and things of that nature. There are also some other powers that it gives the Chief, but it isn't an uncommon thing in communities around. It would put our Fire Chief and Police Chief basically on even ground, and that's what we would be voting on for Article 25. And then finally, Article 26 is essentially to set the ballot. It lists all the positions that are up for election for the upcoming election, which is May 13th, which is the Saturday after town meeting, and just label, I don't know, should I read them all out, Cody?
No, I don't think that's necessary.
I don't think you need to, yeah. But essentially, just a housekeeping measure to officially put those positions on the ballot for Election Day, May the 13th.
Yes, 10 a.m. to 6 p.m., get out and vote.
Yes, at the Halifax Elementary School. So hopefully we get some good numbers there.
Very good.
Alright, that was easy.
Yeah, this has been good. Thank you for joining us, and Mr. Seelig... Yeah, this has been good, thank you for joining us, and Mr. Seelick, thank you for doing this.
Thanks for having me.
This is very nice, I think it'll be very helpful to our residents, and we're excited to see you all at town meeting, come, come all, come early.
Absolutely.
And we'll hopefully get this done all in one night, and very good.
And kudos to you, Cody, I think it's a very streamlined warrant, and, and, you know, there, the articles are in there, I think the things that are in there need to be in there, but I think you've done a great job of condensing them, and hopefully, fingers crossed, we can get our town meeting done in one night, so that relies on you folks, so please, 5:45, May the 8th, be there, and let's get 100 folks there as soon as we can, and I'm knocking on what I'm gonna call it, it's gonna be one night.
I like that, I like your thinking, I haven't said the same thing.
I'm gonna be positive, it's gonna be one night, so we'll get this done.
Very good.
So, all right.
All right, thanks, Jonathan.
Thank you, guys, take care.